Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. And on the agenda, I'm going to add one item. This is a discussion on the boards and commissions, okay? That I've been thinking about for some time. And just kind of somewhat having gotten around to putting it together and somewhat just after various discussions, I've decided to bring it up tonight. So we'll be adding that. I think the fire station feasibility study is going to be shortened considerably. And when we get to that, I'll explain why. I think that's, we need, there's some other stuff needs to be talked about there before we proceed. Too far in finding a location.
Rob's going to be coming up through the fire station discussion too.
He is, okay.
Loth is going to let him know when it gets closer. Because they have trainings, which is going to run.
Okay, so we'll start with the discussion on the boulevard trees. And that's in there, there's, okay, there we go.
The city council had previously discussed the Fieldstone homes associated about the boulevard trees and the development. And then the council had reviewed the boulevard tree policy, made changes with the adoption of a policy on the August 24th, 25th in Galfa meeting. So I've provided you with the adopted policy and then the proposed policy that, or draft policy that was given to you. And Jerry would like to address that with you.
Evening. I was here a couple of weeks ago and I see Councilman Eric and Councilman Bruce were here at that meeting. But we went over quite a bit of the reasons why we wanted to look at this policy that you put into place. And hopefully we can get this changed to what the proposed policy was that you came up with initially. A lot of our reasoning was basically is we went back to the history and how that development was set up. And went back to the initial agreements that were made between the city and the developer at that time was Hartman and stuff like this. It was a planned community with covenants and stuff. And part of that, those covenants and stuff that were made out and what had to happen there was a lot to do with trees and stuff like this. The boulevard trees were in there and it described how the trees were going to be planted, things like this. And the council at that point agreed with that, that would be a nice development, stuff like this. And approved Hartman's plans for a Fieldstone development, which included the boulevard tree policy that Hartman had in place for that development of Fieldstone. Our thinking is too, that when this came out, decided not to plant the trees there, it's, they said you couldn't replace them. Well, aesthetically, that's, I mean, we've got some trees that are doing quite well, some are dying and they're, but it would look terrible if you're going to have a tree here and also made for a block. You may not have any trees and also you're going to have some more trees in there. They're going to be kind of hit and miss all the way through there. And it's really going to, just really take away from the effect that the community was built on. And a lot of these people, part of the reason they built up there is how it's going to look and how it would look and stuff like this with the trees being a big part, with the paths, sidewalks, things like this going through there. So the feeling is that these people bought into this, build up there for these reasons. And now you can't go back and change something that you already agreed to. I mean, you probably could, but you're going to offend a lot of people's stuff up there. Because that's the reason, I said to the council, what you have to do is you have to be far sighted enough to look at the future of the city of mayor. You can't have everything the same. Like, one of the comments was made at some point that should be liked with cold water, hidden creek. Why do you want the same thing? I mean, you have to give people choices to build in or to come into this community. You don't want everything the same. And that is different. Some people like it, like I said before, some people don't like it because up there you have to pay an association fee. Other places you don't have to do that. But with the association fee comes some things that make that look a little bit nicer maybe in some areas than some of the other communities. But that's a choice that you as the leaders of the city have to offer to future homeowners coming into the city. And it's a choice that was agreed to, you know, when this development first started. Because one of the issues brought up at that time, like I said, you guys weren't here, they said that they found that there were some issues in cold water and hidden creek. That's why they'd want boulevard trees. My response to that was, if you knew that, then why did you let this come in initially? Because those developments were going before Fieldstone started. So if you had those issues, you knew about it, you should have acted at that point in time and nothing happened. And as we went along, when Hartman, we had, what was it, a letter of, what was that called? It wasn't a escrow.
Credit.
Letter of credit that they had there. And that was maybe three years ago, not that long ago, when that was cleared up with Hartman, when he went, had to get that cleared up. And we put more trees back in just to get rid of that letter of credit and stuff at that time. So as, as recent as three years ago, we're still putting in trees with the full knowledge of the council. So the trees and stuff we put in there. And now we, I just don't think it's a good plan to come back and in the middle, salt and switch our process for that phase one and phase two of Fieldstone. And I know Councilman Tice asked last time, he said, "Well, how about future Fieldstone developments?" And I said, "Well, that we could discuss." You know, that would be an area, because that hasn't been built up yet, you know, and it's something future. So those people that would move in, if they'd make changes, they would know once they start buying lots, once it's developed that this is what they're getting into. But Phil's, of phase one and two, here's what we're offering people when they come in, we'll give them all the information with all the covenants and stuff. Here's what it is with the, what the whole Fieldstone phase one and phase two is supposed to happen. What you're getting into once you buy and move into those phases. So that's our reasoning that we want to keep those there. I know that we came earlier, it was about a year ago. Maybe we didn't give the correct information to the council. The chief reason for coming at that point is just whose trees were they? And if they were diseased or dying, who would have to pay for them? And that was our reason for coming. It wasn't to put things back on the city. We just had to clarify it with our people so that if something happens, we know what we have to do with our residents and stuff with the replacement of these trees. So at that point, you know, you said it basically was the city's responsibility. We had to take that on. We accepted that and we moved forward. And then all of a sudden, August 10th, I get the proposed policy. And I'm thinking, okay, we agree with what you proposed at that point in time. And like I said, it was my mistake for not attending that meeting. I should have, but I thought, well, I agree with this, so I'll just let it go. And then all of a sudden you change the policy, you know. And I wasn't aware of that policy change that that was going to happen. So that's why we're here. We want to get that last part out with just the replacement of the trees.
What they're talking for about who's maintaining those trees and is there some controversy?
That's what we talked about initially, stuff to maintaining. That came through your policy that the city basically would trim and stuff. We agreed with all the things that were in the proposal that you had. So when we met, we agreed with what, what you said, said this is what was going to happen, okay. We agreed with it and we didn't have any problems with that. It was just the big issue that we came at that time that we addressed of just the, the cost for replacement. You said the city didn't want anything to do with a replacement cost of those trees. And we said, fine. So then we'll deal with our homeowners, with our association and stuff, how would we replace those trees in the boulevard that died or were diseased.
So I drove up there. I'd like to spend more time up there than what I do, but people just like stare when you're driving around real slow staring at their lots and stuff. And I don't want to get in trouble. But what I noticed.
My number?
What, yeah, right? Yeah, I got a lot of stares. But what I noticed is that, and this is what I don't like about it either, and not really, I don't think that the recommendations for the planting in the original agreement have been done. I see trees right next to driveways. I see three trees in one block or one lot and none in the next one. And then two, and then some are on the end of the block, some are in the middle and some are on the other end. It's like, it's not uniform. And then they're all different sizes and all different kinds and that's just kind of, that's just my.
To answer that, a lot of those trees, the additional ones put in by Hartman were, were correct. Then when the city shoved it out to have this person, our company, put in these trees to get rid of that line of credit, they were punched in. And I don't know if they maybe didn't know exactly how they were supposed to be put in and they just put trees in there just to get rid of this line of credit letter.
Hartman put those in. The city didn't.
Well, that was, oh, well, I wasn't wanting, okay. That was done right at the end.
Hartman, you would supervise.
So were those put in boulevards?
Some of them more, some of them. We had a whole, there was a whole landscape plan for Fieldstone. And we sat down as a group, we had a committee, Chris Capal was on that committee, I don't remember who else was. And we went through the landscape plan and made the adjustments to it with Hartman. And then they agreed to come in and plant the trees that needed to be planted, so.
I guess I just don't understand how it gets so uneven, discombobulated. And the trees that are next to people's driveways, that looks like they put them there themselves. And, you know, if they don't.
Same lot, those trees are put in by either Hartman or the city. And the trees are put in at the end. You guys agreed which trees had to come in. You agreed how many trees. And the city was what agreed to put them in. And that's how those got in. There are lots that don't have trees and what you were saying before is that we're not going to ask those people to the lots that's old, put in a tree that we, in policy or the size, the type of tree, is that? We just, and the dead ones, if they die within a person's lot, you know, who has people take theirs?
So how come some have three in them and some have like one or two?
Maybe the people have just planted more trees.
It was, I think it was based on a distance between the trees. They're trying to set them at a certain distance.
So some lots put in two and the next one.
We didn't dictate where they were going to go.
Well, the different sizes would come from replanting.
Exactly.
From the first time to the second time. Anytime you have a tree die, you're going to have that. And it's nice to have that variation so they don't all die at the same time.
Or they all still.
There are many individuals that have planted a lot of trees in there. These mainly, for Hartman, and Hartman's agree with the city at the last time.
And I really don't know any on the boulevard that was, I think on their lots they put trees. I don't think any of the residents put trees on the boulevard.
Can you, okay, go ahead.
So the recent homes that were built up there, have, has anything been done on those lots as far as plantings or?
Those, yeah, whatever Luann just talked about, those were put in, was that three years? Or whenever that was, right at the end to get rid of the line of credit, they were all punched in. And even vacant lots at that point, if they didn't have one, or there was a dead tree, they took it out and put a new tree in there.
And but then in new homes it came up, if there wasn't a boulevard tree, they had to plant a boulevard tree and one tree in the lot.
Exactly.
Because that's the agreement that we had. So the packed homes, houses that got built, they put a boulevard tree in and one tree on the lot.
So that is.
And they wanted to keep it that same way.
That's how we did it.
Currently being done now.
It was, yes.
Okay.
But that was two years ago.
Two years ago, okay.
Probably.
It wasn't that long.
So what happens when a tree dies and if they can be replaced, but they never replace them? They just leave them?
Who, we have, we have an ordinance that says they can't leave dead trees.
So now we're going to force them to pull it out?
Ordinance violation.
But see, that's what we would like changed. We could come back to the order with our covenants and stuff saying, "Now we will get that tree replaced." So we have a tree back in the boulevard without the responsibility of the city.
Well, you probably can do that covenants anyways. I mean, it's just that we need to have something in place to do something if we have a dead tree.
What's, let me start with a really dumb question, but I want you to answer it. What's your ultimate goal? What, the ultimate goal for these trees? What's the, I'm trying to, okay, I've got a follow-up statement I want to make. I don't know what your answer is. What's the ultimate goal for the?
Basically, it's aesthetically how that development is going to look. And.
How's it going to look?
And you know, boulevard trees really beautify a drive-through area, whether it's a street, avenue, whatever it may be. I mean, it just actually, it looks nice.
Drive-through Hunter's Crest in St. Bonny, they have boulevard trees.
I know I've dealt with, well, I worked in the cities and stuff too, as you had them, Hopkins, you know, St. Louis Park and stuff. And areas where it was planned, they look great. I mean, some others where they have just one here and one there, that's terrible. Because now it looks like, oh, I'm going to go one here and the next person does whatever. But I mean, if it's planned and it's organized, you can tell right away how they look. And it, like I said, for the city, credit to you guys, what really makes the city of Maryland look nice is this Fieldstone Parkway coming in. Where you had like those maple trees and they're all falling, they all turn a red color and stuff like this. Beautiful. It's a beautiful drive. I mean, it looks really nice for the city and stuff too, when people come driving through, you're getting a lot of traffic with the high school and stuff, people coming through that area. So that's a, the kudos, you know, to the city when it looks, yeah, something beautiful.
What's nice about them is that they're all spaced out evenly.
Yes.
But when you go, when you drive through Fieldstone now, it just doesn't look that, that way. It's just.
A lot of that is what the various, the age of the trees, like I said, a lot of them are the younger trees and some of the older were.
I don't even think it's that so much as.
The block where I live, you get some of these older ash trees. Some of them might have got that ash borer disease or something that were taken out. And now you have young trees replacing those, so it looks.
No, I get that.
Yeah.
But.
They're, they're not spaced that far apart.
The lots that have three in the boulevard and then two and then one and, I mean, it was just like, I don't know.
I'll just drag through the agains. I don't remember that we had them that close together. They're spaced fairly close. They may not be exactly right on, but they're.
I don't even know if two of them are alive.
Oh, well, see, that's what some of the vacant lots, that's, we talked about last.
No, this was, this was in front of a house. Right away when you come in off of Loiter High.
I think one of my biggest concerns is, is all those street trees need maintenance. And the maintenance is very expensive. I don't know if you, if you know what St. Louis Park pays for a forester a year? And people's crews to go out and trim and cut all those trees on an annual basis.
But my point is, we already have boulevard trees in there. Just go right out the street here and go up towards the grade schools and grade school, get all boulevard trees all the way along. What's your cost there? Really cost.
Wasn't.
There's going to be some cost when the trees are young. I get that. When they get more mature, I don't think you put a lot of money in those trees.
Wasn't there something about, you were in and we talked about maintenance of trees? And then we were asked who was going to water them? And wasn't there some issues about some people up there not wanting to water them?
Well, the issue there was on the vacant, the vacant lots. The people that, if you put in a tree and there are people living there, they were taking care of them. But the problem was is that now, like where I lived, there's three vacant lots before the next house. While the trees were put in, well, who's going to take care of those trees that needed some water? I mean, this year wasn't a problem because they're playing rain this year, but those previous years, it got dry.
And we had to replace all those empty lots when they get full and make sure they get full trees and cut off the dead ones. Chris said an empty lot, we would take care of all that. And the problem was, actually, one of the guys in the city came up there and I was going to put these trees and he said, "You don't touch these." Because I came up in the waste compartment and he hired you back. We're going to take care of all the watering. It's our total responsibility, you guys don't touch it. But we did. And of course, some of lots, the trees in empty lots died. But, you know, he said, well, whatever, we agreed on the city.
I guess my comment, the reason I asked before, you said the word aesthetics, which I agree with.
What is?
My comment would that, would be to that is, I oftentimes walk home from the post office down our street, especially in either midsummer when it's really all greened up or fall when it's turning color. And our street looks absolutely beautiful now.
It does.
It's taken 40 years to get to that point without any covenants. Because our street, everybody put their own trees in and took care of it all up and down both sides. And yet, when you look down and now it has got, it doesn't have a canopy as such, but it's got a nice row of trees, both sides are there. And whether it's in the boulevard trees or, I'd be more concerned about encouraging people to have trees on their front yard.
Trees in their lots.
Whether they're lined up, you know, I go down Forest Street there and I don't, they're not probably all lined up really. But as a whole, that tree looks, that tree looks very nice. And especially in fall when those colors start to, it's beautiful.
But my point, Jerry, is that, Mr. Mayor is, is that.
That's fine.
This was agreed to when the development came in place. So now you're going to have some trees, they're not going to be lined up anymore. You're going to have some on the boulevard and then if you move the rest back, that's going to look terrible. I mean, this is a decision that was made a while ago. And I know you were the mayor at that time, I don't know the council members, if any of those people were on at that point in time. But the agreement was made and you knew at that time. I mean, good or bad, you have to, when you make good faith decisions, you have to live up to those decisions. And that, that's what we're saying. You agreed to this and said, "We're going to do this." We agreed to it, we want to bring this development in, we want this developer to come in, and you agreed to it.
Yes, you're right. We agreed to it.
And that, that's what we're selling to these people when they come in and buy these lots and stuff, say, "Here's what we got." And also you said, "Oh, no, we're not going to do that." And what's the next thing? Well, it's too much to maintain the paths, we're going to rip those out. And then, you know, where do you go? You know, where's the end?
But we had, we had agreed to it at that point before we had had any major street reconstruction in town. Okay, I think now, having gone through the street reconstruction on Forest Street and some others, I think we'd probably be much more hesitant about to have, agree to a boulevard trees policy. Because of the fact that they cost more when it comes time for a contractor to work there. The roots cause a problem, you've got all kinds of problems that there are.
You can rip all the other boulevard trees out of it. If you think they're causing problems, then the same principle is going to apply to that. That if they're causing problems, you're going to rip all of them out.
I'm not going to purposely rip them out. I just, I just don't know how to perpetuate a problem and put them more in.
I haven't seen, you know, I've been through the city, I know it causes some problems, but that's going to be a lot of years on a roll. Because these aren't very big trees. And all we want to do is live by the city's policy, tree policy, what Luann says has to be planted. And we're asked to be planted. We're going to take sure and make sure they get planted where they're supposed to be planted. The right sized trees and everything else. We want to keep it consistent. We don't want to just three quarters of it's done and it's going to mean another 25 lots that get finished in pretty high taxes, you know, in Harber County. And that's going to come back to the city of Mary too, when these lots get finished.
So that's what we're thinking like with the phase one and two, keep that in place. Now, future additions, we can discuss that and we can work on, you know, an agreement that'll benefit the most of us.
So why did, why did that, why was that agreement made with Hartman? Do you remember?
About what?
Something different?
The boulevard trees? It's what we wanted to do. It was a master planned community and that was how they chose to do it.
They come up with planning and every planning and everybody.
gave you planning commission to the city council and same.
There's a city plan or everything, so.
How much is left of phase one and two to complete? Are they almost complete?
It's almost completely.
Yeah, I mean, there's empty lots, but I mean, as far as the road and everything, that's done.
Okay, so.
So what you drove through.
We're not really deciding about phase one and two. We're deciding future phases. We pretty much are in agreement that there won't be any more boulevard trees, right?
Well, this policy was for phase one and two, that's what you wanted.
Okay, so now what we have to decide is if we're going to allow the replacement of dead trees. Because these trees are already there.
That's correct. I think he's asking for, for the vacant lots.
No, this is what I'm asking, what you approved, I don't know if you remember what you approved.
It's in front of us.
We're comfortable with the replacement, just, we want that removed.
These ones was one line. The ones that are not allowed to plant boulevard trees that die.
Yes. We want to replace those trees in that phase one and two. Like I said, the future developments, we'd be happy to meet with you and stuff like this when we get to that point and discuss that. Because that's something we have to put some changes probably in our covenants for these other phases that may or may not happen.
So are you going to go back, you know, I mean, I haven't been up there since the spring. But, you know, to make sure that everybody is in compliance to what, you know.
That's what we would do as an association. Our directors, board directors, they're going to have to follow this and say, "Here's what's in place."
Because I agree, I mean, it looks kind of weird now and it's going to look even weirder if you don't have those trees there either.
It already looks like that. There's some trees.
Is there a way to fix it to make it look more uniform?
The only way to fix this is to just continue with this phase one and two covenant as, or as it was presented. With the understanding that future phases are probably not going to get the same benefit.
No, but we'd like, as I said, at that point in time, whenever it happens, we'd like to be part of that conversation at that point in time.
Can we restrict it to one tree in the boulevard?
Next year, it might be 10 year.
I think that's what Luann said, right now it says one tree in the boulevard, one in the front yard, right?
Right, they have to plant two trees, right. One in the boulevard.
We're going to live by the city.
But some of them have two in the boulevard, one person has three in the boulevard.
I don't, I don't know.
We could, we'd be glad to ride through there with you.
I mean, all the time, what do you call the boulevard? I mean, how far to go? Because I've measured some of those trees, not what the sidewalk is, but the ones that are on the other side of the road where the sidewalk wasn't. And those average between, what I've measured from the center of the road to where the tree was, it's either 21 or 22 feet. They're right in that range. And how many feet back?
Then they really aren't, would they be in the boulevard?
Well, that's, I mean, that's a question you have to look at as a city. Where does the boulevard end?
I was just counting the ones in that grassy part after the sidewalk.
Well, I think it says sidewalk exists with an eight foot boulevard. So I think we're, boulevard's less than eight feet wide. So I think the way I interpret it is eight feet back of the curb is the boulevard.
Typically, there is some type of utility box on the corner, block corner. Are they?
There are. There's some that they have, but they're a lot further in when you get, and not on the corner lots and stuff like this.
They're probably off 15, 20 feet.
It looks like most of those are, were adhered to. They planted them the distance away that this policy recommended. But again, there's, there's trees up there that are right next to driveways. I don't know, I don't know what to do about that right now.
I don't think we're going to be, we're going to start telling people to take them out. I think we're just.
I didn't say that. Well, that tree's pretty small, you can take it out, but it won't be in a few years.
Okay, I think we've discussed this last before and again tonight. So what does the council wish to do? I guess our option is either to say no boulevard trees or to allow the plan to go forward as it had been done with phases one and two. And when if phase three comes in, it'll be a different discussion.
Can we at least change something to say that they can only have one tree in the boulevard?
I think Luann, you said that's what our current.
They're supposed to put the boulevard.
Okay, well, then what are we going to do about the ones that don't?
I guess I want to go up and look and see where there are ones.
And then we have to establish what is the boulevard? You know, where, what's the distance? So we know that if they're beyond that, they might be close, but they might not be really be in the boulevard. I mean, it's just, that hasn't been decided either. You know, what is the boulevard?
Have we decided who owns the trees?
The homeowner's.
Homeowners, homeowners of trees.
But we have to do the maintenance on them.
Well, that's what we proposed, that's what, that's what you agreed to and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, but let's say they're not getting watered again and.
Well, those, say that we're. Homeowner's responsible for watering the trees. And if the tree dies, we're going to make the homeowner replace it.
The only maintenance we're going to do is tree trimming, which is when the trees are hanging over the, the street or when they need to be pruned so that we don't, it doesn't create problems for us. We are going to go in and maintain them and water them or replant them.
So when trees die, because I specifically remember somebody from up there coming down here and telling me that, "I'm not watering that tree because it's not my tree."
We didn't understand, we didn't, no matter, because so many stuff down, something in city.
We had some mixed information at that time, that's why we came to you. And that, that was clarified at those meetings.
Then we went and bought, we bought more trees and then we didn't water them again, right?
No.
We never, but they wanted us to buy trees.
Yeah.
They wanted us to replace the dead trees. And then that went to park board and park board didn't think that they were responsible for that. So the issue just kind of stopped.
They took the money out of Hartman's fund that they had credit.
The line of credit.
And that one's on empty lots.
Not for those dead trees.
For day insurance, you know, make sure people go there and meet the city's tree policy.
Hartman already, it was given back his line of credit when he planted the trees.
But the replacement tree would be back to the resident, but then this came out that he couldn't replace them. So now we're kind of stuck. Do we tell a person, "Place that tree," and also the city says, "Aye." Do we tell a person, "Place that tree," and also the city says, "Aye."
We just want that one set.
Well, we'd have to, we'll have to add back the planting guidelines and the trees and what trees are approved, okay, too.
Well, and if we add that back with the.
With this proposal, the initial proposal, yes.
The initial proposal with the, I think you maybe need to add in that the city requires one in the boulevard, one, or requires two trees, one in the boulevard, one in the front yard.
But no more than one in the boulevard.
But no more than one in the boulevard.
Exactly.
And that's just for.
You may want to.
It's one and two only.
Exactly.
Yep.
How close to the curb are you looking at putting those in the boulevard?
We're going to go by the city's ordinance where the city tells us to do it.
See, right now, the ones that are there for this development, they were, I went from the center of the road. There's a lot of stuff for the city, it starts from the center of the road going back into the lot. And like I said, those trees that we had on the side of the road that weren't with the sidewalk were 21 or 22 feet, right in that range. How the distance from the center of the road is where those trees were. I should have measured right from the curb and I didn't do that, so I couldn't tell you.
You've mentioned those. The boulevard would be within eight feet of the road.
They all have sidewalks.
Between the sidewalk and the road are our boulevard.
Our trees.
How close the ones on the boulevard are.
Okay, so is that what we want to do is?
You know, I don't have no problem moving forward with this, making it, making it so that they can finish one and two. I'd like to see that the trees be planted back as far as possible. I'd like to see that the trees be planted back as far as possible, so they're not in the right of way to where we're gonna have to be out there trimming the limbs of...
Well, right now, I think most of the trees were punched in, some of them are probably dead. But, I mean, physically, the trees are in and kept for one lot, I think we missed, but that's what it came down to. But I think basically, they're all in place, not saying they're all alive, but their trees are where they're supposed to be on the Boulevard. So it would just be our responsibility to get back with the owners, say, okay, this one is dead, you have to replace this tree, which wouldn't affect the city. So you're not gonna see more trees better there, except for that one lot, we have to put one in when somebody purchases that lot.
Part of the problem with putting the trees in the Boulevard when it's an empty lot, they run over them and they hit them with stuff. That's part of the problem.
And that's what we were thinking as our group, is that if those are dead, we may just leave that tree out, and then once somebody buys the lot, then go back and say, okay, you have to put this tree in before, you know, the sign lies up.
It'll make more sense putting it after they build, so you don't...
After they build, to put the tree, meeting the city's requirements.
Kyle, how wide is the grassy part of that Boulevard, from the curb to the sidewalk?
Fourteen, four or five, Kyle, it's not very wide.
So, if a side, if a Boulevard is less than eight foot wide, trees should not be planted in the Boulevard area? So the four foot doesn't count? It's the part from the curb all the way back to the right of way? Or the end of the sidewalk? I don't know where the Boulevard is.
The Boulevard is about eight feet, between the road and that eight foot mark.
Past the sidewalk, past the grassy part, past the sidewalk.
Between the sidewalk and the street.
Yeah. Yeah, that's how they are.
The sidewalk exists with an eight-foot Boulevard, grassy area, trees should be centered between the sidewalk and the curb.
That's how, those are with the sidewalk.
Drive through Hunter's Crest, that's the neighborhood right on Seven, right when you're leaving town. They have Boulevard trees on the Parkway, you know, and then if you go down each road, there's, if there's a sidewalk. It looks nice, I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't look nice, but they actually have the same tree. It's the same tree on the Boulevard, and then it's different trees on each side. My sister just moved there, so I drive it every day. And I noticed that they were replacing trees just the other day.
I mean, that's what we would like too, but the decision was made for the types of trees that they could select individually, so it kinda put us at a loss.
Was it what the city told us they wanted?
Yes, so the resident had the right to pick from this type of trees.
Five different ones, the way it looks.
Okay, so are we in agreement? Bring this back to the council next time?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, then we'll bring it back.
Do I have to attend a meeting? You're not gonna change it?
We might.
So I should be here?
You never know.
Just one thing for sure.
I would attend.
Okay.
Have a meeting when you're reading meters or something. If you go up there, if there's anything that looks really goofy or out of place that isn't right, just let us know, let the man know, just let everybody know, and you take a special peek at it, or... Trees in the Boulevard, if there's three in one area that doesn't look quite right, or if there's...
I've been working with Luann and Kyle both at some of those, where some of those trees died in the past, and if they were really thick and sparse, we just took the tree out, we didn't even replace anything, because there's enough trees around there. I mean, it's not that every tree has to be replaced, because the trade to us, we discussed, you know, what, which one should go, which one, and if you had to remove it, it'd be replaced, and the only ones that made now, I think it was a couple on Storm Parkway that storm damage or something, that might have to be replaced. But other than that, I think everything's in pretty good shape. So, we do work together on a lot of those things, and I don't know if that's gonna become a conflict, we just work it out with ourselves.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Personnel policy's in the work packet for your review. Basically, this was, we took the League of Minnesota Cities' policy, just suggested policy, and we just tailored it to the mayor, and Luann has highlighted, I think, in red, if I get to it. You know, there are things in red, like City of Mayor just filled all that stuff in, and then we added, or some of the things we had specifically.
Just made it more oriented toward us, specifically.
All the family leave stuff, everything's added into it that the League of Minnesota Cities recommends. And we just, we figured that these are using their policy that was already approved, and their attorneys have already approved, rather than us writing our own and having, and spending tons of money having our attorney review it anyhow. So, are there anything that you have gone through that you want to look at? And Ty, you said something about the PTO thing, or was that too?
Yeah, I found a PTO, like, rate or schedule online.
My work does this PTO thing, and very similar rates that are on this policy. I think I get, at five years, it went up to like, I think I'm like at seven point two or something, so very similar to the seven point nine. So, I mean, I looked at yours too, it ranges, there's a lot of different...
Yeah, I kinda liked the different ranges. I'm kind of, I think, I find it odd that if you work less than a year, you can have about three weeks and three days of paid time off. That's what that just calculates to, unless I totally don't understand it and I don't know what I'm doing, which is possible.
Sometimes you don't start accruing until the first ninety days.
Right, you can't use any vacation time to...
But that's not what this says, so then I had to try to figure out, you know, what...
What page are you on?
Eight.
Page eight?
It's that, oh, you're way down.
Just page eight?
Nope.
It's about two days a month.
Page eight.
Oh, five, minus five.
That's pretty common.
Yeah.
Three weeks vacation, paid vacation for working less than a year? Nice.
The old city policy, you got eight hours of sick time a month.
Yeah, I didn't get...
In two, two weeks vacation, so if you had two days...
Same thing.
You know, you couldn't use your sick time for a lot of things.
Okay.
But you actually had over four weeks vacation, according to the old policy.
No matter how many years you worked, how long you worked.
Correct. But you couldn't use it for a certain period of time, where this, you don't get as much sick accrual.
You don't get any sick time, it's all the same.
Well, it's all the same.
It's all the same, so if you're not there because you're sick or you're home, it's all the same.
So do we have an annual cap in ours, in this new one?
Yeah, it's one seventy-six, wasn't it?
Yeah, I saw it somewhere, I don't remember what it was.
I remember seeing it someplace too, yes.
What's the four hundred and fifty-seven deferred comp?
You wanna put into anything that's paid, that's paid, you're paid over and above. So like now, if we convert, because that's what I would, we would propose, that we convert it, conversion from vacation and sick leave to sick time, and I gave you the years of service in our current policy, and then what the current sick time banks were, and what would be sick to PTO. Well, I'm gonna go above the one seventy-six, so then we will pay out above that one seventy-six, and I can either put it into a deferred, a four fifty-seven deferred comp, or take it in cash, is what that is. And we do have AIG Valix that we use for deferred comp, so if I wanted to do that, I could. I also sent in my memo, Kyle hasn't even been here five years yet, he's only been here two, and he has accrued a hundred and eighty-three hours of sick time. I don't think it's fair just to take that sick time away from him, that the conversion probably should be whatever the, greater than five is, thirty percent, so it's fifty-five hours of paid time off that he would get than for, and we, I bring this back as a separate action item for you to do, so...
Where did you get the percentage? How did you figure that out?
From the policy that we have.
The conversion?
This, right above it, in my memo, is from the current, the current personnel policy allows to pay out of sick time if an employee resigns or retires. Current sick time will be converted to annually based on that.
Okay.
And so that's how I use that forty and, forty and fifty percent, and thirty. I came up with a thirty because it's five years or more.
What's the maximum on sick time you can carry right now?
I think eight hundred and forty hours or something. It's a lot.
I have a hard time taking that, I, yeah. Can you maybe, I mean, I know the county was looking at going to this and see, and see what they were offering the...
I can do that.
units, to see what that, what that carryover is, that...
Oh, how they carry, what they...
What they're allowing.
They transfer it.
This is the county's policy, the thirty and forty and fifty percent was from the county.
Yeah, well, are they actually taking, are they actually taking time away from people? Are they...
When I talked to the City of Bellplane, they actually, they had eight to one, how they convert their sick time, but because they were some employees that's been there longer, they gave them some extra into the bank. So, I can ask them what they did, and I can contact the county to find out too, but if we, if I left today, that's what I would get, I would get forty percent of my sick time. So, how is that any different? Or if Lois left today, she'd get half of her sick time. I mean, I think, I mean, I look at it as more as like an employer, I mean, you want to have things that people, you know, you want good employees, so sometimes you have to have some of these benefits in a way to keep good employees. I mean, if you have a really crappy, you know, I, I don't, my job, I don't like at times. But I stay because I have profit sharing, I can cash out my, my PTO at the end of the year, and I have to have at least, I think, forty hours, that I can cash out anything above and beyond, and it's a nice little check that I can get at the end of the year, and I get medical reimbursement.
And that's why government offers, you know, more sick time and time off, because they're trying to entice people. We want good people to come to the public sector and not go to the private sector, because I'm assuming you could probably go be an administrator of some company and make a lot more money on that side, whereas you might not see as much vacation and sick time, you know?
Most people aren't gonna take five weeks of vacation, just because of just your workload in general. I mean, I don't, I don't take that much time, but this is, this is aligned with what my, I mean, I'm private, but... So I can bring the personnel policy then back to City Council for approval, and then in the meantime, I'll find out how the county converts their sick time, and we'll have that as a separate action item for you to act on, the conversion of the sick time, and it'd be a separate memo and everything, is what I thought I would do. And then you'll have to deal with Kyle too, whether you're in agreement with giving him some time and not taking all his sick time away from him, because it is an earned benefit that he has gotten, and so... How did sick time work? It was just you could only use that time if you were sick? I used it for doctor's appointments, dentist appointments, yeah.
I would check with other cities. I know Waconia's done this, and I know Victoria's done this, and just see how they converted their time.
Okay, this is how Bellplane converted theirs.
And I understand that.
And Bellplane was the same as we were, eight hours of sick time, and their vacation was the same.
Yeah.
So I didn't go any further just because, but I can check with Waconia and Victoria too.
You know, I'd, I'd take a look at those too, and like Nikki said, if this, if this chart's comparable to what other municipalities are doing, I don't have a problem with this.
No.
Um, I know that sick time, you used to be able to accrue about, I think it was nine hundred and fifty-seven. Moving forward with PTO, how much of that can you...
Only a hundred and seventy-six hours.
Only a hundred and seventy-six.
And then you're paid out after that, above that.
And that's the other question is, are the other cities paying out, or are they forcing you to use more of it?
Okay, I can ask that question too.
You know, I think it said somewhere in here, I read through it briefly, about using thirty percent of it.
You have to use forty percent of your time, or you don't get, it doesn't get paid out, right?
Yeah.
So then that, yeah.
I'd like to see you use more of it. It's there for, for your health, to get out of here so you don't get burnt out.
Yep.
So I'd like to see employees use more of it versus getting paid out.
Yeah, I, it's there for a reason. Okay, so you're gonna bring this back then?
Yep, and then I'll do a little more research on the sick time and the conversion for you, and I'll contact with other cities and find out about payouts, and, so, yeah.
Okay, performance reviews.
We had, Eric and I had had some discussion about the performance reviews and whether they should be, who should have performance reviews, and, that's why this got brought up.
Page sixty-three.
Yeah. Here we go.
Um, I was, you know, we were kinda talking, and I think that it started at the fire chief. I think that the fire chief is one of the key players within our city organization, and thought that this could potentially be an area where we could start to help with goal setting, and then get him on the same page, or whoever the fire chief is, on, you know, what the vision of the city is, what we feel is important in our, in our public safety. And talked to a couple of the other fire chiefs within the county, and the City of Waconia actually does a, a review of their fire chief, and they go from there. The fire, council does the fire chief, the fire chief then does the captains, and the captains will do the lieutenants, and the lieutenants would go and do specific firefighters. And after talking with the mayor, mayor a little bit, I think we kinda maybe would mutually agree that this would be maybe something to definitely look at. We can hopefully start to work through some succession planning and training for whoever the potential new fire chief may be, if and when that happens. We can hopefully get some interest down from the bottom of the ranks up about, you know, taking some of those leadership roles. We can hopefully, the fire department, the firefighters can yearly kinda sit down and figure out what their role is, and if they want more of a role, and they can say, I would like to attend pump operator training, or officer training, and their direct supervisors, their lieutenants, would know that that's, that's in place. And just kinda get a, kind of a feel of, you know, where the, where the department's going. Goal setting, I think, is important. Another, another part of it is the, with the inclusion of para retirement. Now, we can kinda get a handle on, you know, because they, you know, they have a good years and bad years, so at some point, somebody's gonna decide if firefighter A, whose percentage isn't the highest, and maybe you got firefighter B, who's maybe a little higher, but to decide what, what is, what is a good year to gain that para credit, so you got one firefighter that's barely meeting the minimums, and you got the other one that, you know, with Bob Carlson, ninety-five percent of the calls most likely, or the fire chief, you know, so they get the same payout at the end as somebody that's just kinda, kinda scraping along there. Maybe we can, you know, incorporate that in there and get a better handle on who is, you know, attending trainings and attending calls. Goals, goals I think is, goals is a big thing for, you know, for everybody.
Yeah, we, we talked about that, I agree, I think we, it sounds like a good tool to use, and even in light of today's, so I say society, how things work, I think we need, as a city, need to have things in place that we are doing adequate supervision and making sure that we are just handling things properly. There are things, there are things that come up once in a while that I think this would help us out in the long run, identifying things that need to be changed. Both of us agreed very readily that neither one of us relatives is thought of replacing Rod, so we're not looking for a new fire chief, safer for him, so, but I think that's, it's a good, good tool to use to strengthen our fire department, to, to...
You know, I mean, we're making strides at, you know, professionalizing the volunteer firefighter world, and we've been doing that for years now, and I think hopefully that can continue to help us internally to get there. I mean, we're already talking about, what, I mean, training every Mondays, because we understand we need to get a hold of these skills, and I think this is gonna be part of that continued professionalism that we're striving for.
I can see how that would work in, from the lower ranks, but when you start getting up into the upper ranks, I have no clue how to rate Rod's performance on a professional level. I have no idea what is supposed to be happening in the fire department, or what he's supposed to be doing, that's, you know... I don't mean to sound like I'm oblivious, I get it, but I don't feel qualified to do a performance review for the fire chief, or even the assistant chief, or maybe even some of the captains, just because it's not, you're a fireman. Just because it's not- you're a fireman, but I'm not.
Well, if you use- if you look at the city of Waconia's form, they use, they talk about organizational commitment. I mean, obviously, we're going to-
I can see some of the things, right.
That's obviously there.
Yeah, I get that.
Attitude, I mean, that's, you know, I think it's stuff, communications. You know, it's items that are, you know, pretty non-threatening and pretty neutral. Cooperation, leadership, goals, job skills and knowledge. I think, I mean, we're not going to say, well, he was- we're not going to go and say, "Well, how did he manage this fire scene?" I'm not- I mean, it's an overall picture of how things are going with the department and everybody within the department, problem solving.
Well, I think from an employee standpoint, you know, you've got to document what's happening. If there's a percentage of calls you're supposed to make, there's a percentage of training you're supposed to make. If you're not doing this and it ain't being documented, then you have a hard time letting someone go that isn't performing. So, I think the city's responsibility is to make sure this is getting done and we're treating everybody fairly.
I thought it was documented.
With that?
That stuff is, the percentage of calls.
You know, I don't know if it is or it is.
Yeah, there is.
I'm just saying that this is a way to start doing that.
Well, it's formalized, absolutely, at that point.
I remember having these reviews and they'd tell you how many calls you made or didn't make.
Is Waconia still a volunteer fire department?
Yep.
I think, I mean, the first year is never like, we don't think you're doing it, is you set goals and you start something. And then the following year is when you look back at what you did the year before and you say, "Okay, did you meet your goals? Did you-" And then I think it's good because you're not going to be the chief forever. I mean, we all, you know, eventually, I hope you're going to want to retire at some point and go to be a snowbird or something.
Earned it, for sure.
Well, right, yeah, you've earned it. So, it could help provide some of that for the next chief or the next cap- another captain. Or, I mean, you can even go farther down and say, you know, "Who else wants to be an assistant chief?" And it opens up the communication so that the firemen know what the expectations are. And they, "I want to do be a lieutenant." Well, what does that mean? You know, I don't think there's really a lot of place- things in place yet, and this is just an open dialogue. I don't know what he's supposed to do and not. But then that's why you put together and you say, "Here's his tasks." I mean, the CEO of Target, when he, you know, is doing his prior performance reviews on certain people, he's not seeing their day-to-day activities. But he at least understands what their job responsibilities are and gathers that information. But he, in the position we're at, we don't necessarily know, "Are you supposed to do this at the fire scene? Are you doing it?" Probably, I'm assuming you are. But that's just your job description as you lead the fire scene. And if there was issues, my guess is it would come from the bottom to say, like, "I felt like I wasn't really knowing what I was doing," or I'm not saying that's the case. I'm just, you know, "I don't feel like there was enough communication when for these things, or I didn't realize I wasn't meeting my quota." You know, it just opens up the dialogue.
And it wasn't always thought that this is going to be done within a month's time or two months' time. But we were thinking long-term, it may take a year or two to go through the whole process, to get the first evaluation all done. And then that'd be an ongoing thing.
Yeah, I would do- no way we'd implement this year. We'd implement it, you know, starting the modeling review cycle. And I mean, when I think goals, I don't think- it's not goals that we're going to come down- the council's going to come down to the fire department and say, "These are your goals." The goals are going to come up from the chiefs and the lieutenants up. I mean, hopefully you'll come to us and say, "I notice that we have this gap within our abilities. I want to work on fixing this gap." It may be equipment purchases, it may be training, it may be, you know, whatever it's going to be. But you're going to set those goals for yourself or the fire chief will set for themselves, you know, and on their way down. There may be some organizational goals that come down, sure. I mean, maybe an organizational goal would be is we've sent budgets back to departments and say, you know, "Unfortunately, we foresee that we're going to need to cut budgets. We're going to ask the department to come up with functional budget- potential budget reductions that are sustainable." I mean, stuff like that, corporate, well, I mean, organizational wise. But I don't think you would ever see the council come down and say, "You will respond to a scene within this many minutes or you will do this, you will do that." That's, you know, that's your job to take care of that. I mean, the goals are yours, not something that we're going to come down and place upon you. You know, and I think it's important succession training-wise that, you know, I guess I'd put it in the police world, if I was the chief of police of a city and I had a guy that was in my number-two spot that had no ever intention on being that number-one guy, then we have a problem. Because we need to- you're going to be gone someday. We need somebody to step up into that spot. If your number-two guy isn't necessarily interested in doing that, maybe we need to look further into that organization to find somebody that wants to be into that spot. We need to be looking for someone to replace you when you decide to go. Because, you know, everything is all- everything is all in here. And we need to get that knowledge out and about, hopefully through, you know, planning, goal setting, and then just through the review process, we can start to spur some of that, some of those ideas. Um, West Metro Fire, was that the other one that is doing this? Waconia Fire?
South Metro Fire.
Yeah, South Metro. I think it continues with our professionalism of the department.
Yeah, so I think it's in, it's- Eric's done a good job presenting it. And it's just a matter of council, if that's something we ought to do, then we would bring it forward to the council for approval and implement it, you know, probably starting first of the year or with twenty sixteen at least, and get started on the process then. And go forward with it. Rod, you have any comments on it?
I don't think it's meant to be a negative. Like, I like the performance reviews because I want to know what my expectations are. You know, I should have that in my marriage. You're like, "What are you expecting of it?" You know, like, you know, it's like, you know, what do you- I mean, I'm not saying I- I mean, just in life, like, don't you want to know, like, what you should be doing? Am I doing this right, like, with my kids? Like, am I- am I doing this parenting right? You know, like, I kind of-
Find out for a few years. I mean, you're questioning yourself and then-
Making a comment there.
You know, so I guess-
Well, I'm just trying to bring humor to it. Because I don't think this is a bad thing.
No, no, it's-
This is completely positive, like-
It's not meant to be anywhere-
Scary, it's-
No.
No, it's just-
So, I mean, I would like Luanne to take a peek at between the two performance evals that you found. You know, tweak those to what's going to be best, potentially best for us. Work with the fire- I mean, I would say work with the chief too. I mean, let him take a peek at it and what he feels is important and-
And you want me to bring it back as a draft to a work session? And then review it as a work session before it comes to council?
I suppose so.
Would that make sense?
Yeah. Okay, so any other discussion on these performance reviews? Okay, then, I think where I'm at here, first of all.
Public works building.
Public works building stuff? Okay. Okay, um, before we get too far into that discussion, Eric and I talked about a couple of other things. And one of the things Eric brought up, and I think does merit some discussion, Rod, I'm glad Rod's here to chime in on it, is we talked about, we were talking about locations and our needs, our building needs and stuff like this. And public works building is, we're needed at that. We're at some point needed of a fire station. And then Eric mentioned, do we need to consider a, what do you call it, a regional fire department?
Well, we had talked about, should- it's been some- there's been talk on the council level about not buying new property, but to actually use the property at the wastewater treatment plant. And I think Bruce is probably a pretty good, or a vocal proponent of that. And that's where it came- that's where that question I came up is, is that? I mean, what is the possibility of Mayor and New Germany ever combining fire departments? And if that ever is to happen, does it make more sense to put the fire department out there as opposed to purchasing property somewhere else? Do you have any thoughts about- I mean, we're already covering their calls during the day.
We're already talking to the mayor and to the fire chief.
Why? That's just-
Comments they did.
Okay.
And I've had that conversation with-
I know you have too.
Different people. Never is a long time, but, you know.
Correct.
Will we see it in our lifetime?
But I only have some past history already, but New Germany has, we talked a lot of treatment.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did talk about even the wastewater treatment plant. We- yeah, yeah, that's right, okay. I thought you said water- I thought you said water plant. But, yeah, right, we- it broke the subject then. I'm not sure at that point whether it's so much the council or those engineers that didn't want to lose their cut, so.
I mean, is the climate still that- still that way that you don't think they- would they be open to even talking about something like that?
I don't know. I haven't, I mean, when we were taking our long life to Brandon, I talked to him quite a bit and he just, you know. If you're the mayor and like the only chief something and-
Things will change.
After the vote, the whole city, we're going to make that.
Yeah.
Well, let's back it up. What would be your thoughts on it, Rod, as far as, is that something that we should pursue?
One concern that is, you know, our insurance, I think that's very kind of technical. You know, if you would do it here. Considering the miles going up, but, you know, obviously I have to-
To New Germany?
Yeah, I'm there.
Oh, because their rating would drop then. Their rating would drop because of that.
It would need to be in the, I think, rail station.
Part of the-
Do you ever- I was going to say, a lot of stations are more than two miles apart.
Oh, the Chan Aston.
You know, the Chan Aston, the Eden Prairie. You know, I don't know how that would affect, you know, you could have a station one and a station two where there was one engine and one rescue, you know, with the combined station with everything. But, you know, until you sit down and have good faith conversations, it's hard to plan for anything like that.
Are we still covering them during the day or backing up them and even if they don't have enough?
We are doing auto aid. As far as they're doing it with us, we're doing it with them also on district firm special fires. And we also are doing it in each quadrant, our wastewater township. We do water town, Waconia township, Waconia, ten townships also, which are in the process. And how is the township, and the share between, when it's just on structural factors and it's just, so, you're going to be ready.
Yeah, I'll give you that, absolutely.
Well, it's just one way if someone is short-handed, like a weekend or nowadays, in stock, or whatever, you know, if that's weird or, um, no answer, it's got to be hard to figure it out. The one thing about that site is looking at as a whole, or to a net, not a real perfect site, or you want to call it perfect, but filming on thirty and twenty-five is a good area to actually. You know, because that's where most of our main travel. Um, and it's going to be as hard to go upon and on that and get vehicles coming up out of the hill there, you know, from that.
One site kind of thing?
Yeah, so you've got, I mean, people, not only are firefighters going to that, you know, you've got-
But that's an intersection problem, and that's not a- that's not a move-your-firestation problem. If you can't get through-
But I know what he's saying with the hill there and you're blind coming over that and people are coming down. They can't see everybody piling in there.
That's a road design problem. Because if you can't- if you can't get through with lights and siren going, then- And believe me, I was almost getting killed in a car crash while working there. I get it, but, um, I understand that too.
Last Sunday, we went on the roundabout and there was a car, it was a thousand airmen. People was going to be up through that town there. We laid on the horn and it fired each shot.
I get you. I just, I don't know if it's a factor to not purchase a building or not put a fire station somewhere just because of an intersection.
Well, at the last-
Then we change the intersection and fix the intersection. Because if it's not safe for a fire truck, then it's not safe for anybody.
That would cost a lot of money.
Yeah, because that would drive our cost up considerably to fix the intersection and then move-
At the last meeting, we were supposed to kind of all come with pros and cons of the site. So, as far as that site, I have some questions about it. But one of the things, my observation about that site is that it's never really going to be the center of town unless we go past, I mean, it's going to stop. The additions stop right before that. So, we talked last meeting about it being, you know, just as close to the center of town or just as much in the center of town as anything else. It's always going to be the end of town to me because if we do go anywhere, it's going to be a long time before we get past the waste treatment plant.
And why does that matter?
I don't know. It was just a point that was brought up at the last meeting. That it, you know, was in the center of town.
You want to be kind of centrally located and the area that Bruce is on that, in that twenty-five. You know, we have lots of built up, you know, that development ever comes back, you know, going out to highly developed.
Right.
It's a lot quicker if you go from that direction. That's what I'm thinking of, that, you know, we can have all kinds of cars backed up on thirty and all. You've got to get around it. And if you don't have that delay very on twenty-five.
And then my other question was, would it possibly put some restrictions on any future expansion? And I was thinking of New Germany, like, if they would ever agree to go with us in a public works type of situation or a wastewater treatment situation. I can see them doing that before fire departments, just, I think, for a lot of other reasons. And you made good points, you know, the insurance ratings or the ratings will go down or whatever. But I'm wondering if putting a building out there is going to restrict any of that. And I thought we were going to ask you and Clover to weigh in on what that looked like out there, if that was even-
As far as, well, I don't know what inclusion here, it seems a little far-fetched, documented, great, all this, everything else. But as far as that wastewater land in our CFP, we won't have any need to expand that in quite a while. So, that land would be sitting empty for a good amount of time without our current control, control, protection and all that kind of stuff. And even then, when we do need to expand it, we already have plans for another digester off the back. And we do have the E2 on there, sign codes, shorten that, make that smaller. There's a lot of different things we can do out there. And that land, if we did, we wouldn't expand into it any next week, so. And that kind of looks very likely to be a topic very a lot of, oh, that's connected to all of the line as well. And we did do CFP and everything. So, you said we'd rather see it for a little worse than a dump.
So, I have a question. Are we talking about doing like a joint thing? Or I thought we were just- because I'm kind of confused.
No, we were just- we were just talking about what is the potential for the departments actually joining together.
Well, and then, because now we're talking about, well, if we put the fire station out, the wastewater treatment plant and where it is and the blind site and the hill and stuff. But, I mean, I thought we weren't even there yet. I thought we were just trying to figure out that we need a public works building.
Well, yeah, I- that's true too.
You know, like, I mean, I think that the fire station is important, but I feel like more important is the city building. And there's probably enough space for both of that's where it ever ends up being. But at the same time, I think there's a lot more that has to come into play, like what Rod's saying, you know, with where things are. But, I mean, you've got firemen coming from every direction crossing that intersection at thirty and twenty-five now. You know, you have more opportunities for the firemen to get in accidents getting to the station than if they were actually leaving town. You know, but I'm not, I don't even wanna go into that conversation.
No, I think.
I think that's like a way bigger scenario that I couldn't even figure out.
Just, I, just something that came up, you know, I thought we needed to throw it out just in case that needs to be examined.
Like as, like it could be a potential thing.
Yeah, and so, and, so.
Because I wasn't prepared to talk about like where the fire station.
I do think all along, we've been trying to find something that's big enough to house both of them. I mean, why buy all lots all over the place?
I, I agree with that, I think if we do something just to, the economy of scale, you know, we would do that together. And to me, we, it's tied upon the needs of public works and making progress on the part.
With that said, Rutton's evaluation or was there a study, does that shed any light on anything for you or not Rod?
We have to cut down on, you know, how much we're gonna get through the duty, but we're gonna.
Oh, is that what the, like the, okay, I was trying to figure out where that site was.
I was trying to get both of them to look at me.
Because I'm like, I could figure out which one was the one, oh.
I thought it was the same, it's like two different pictures, I'm like, I can't get this out.
That one is very handsome, so this is Mactamus and then it's Botanize.
Okay.
And across the street is, um, Ben gets, and this is the one we want, so this one and then it's Botanize, Mactamus and then.
Okay, I was like, I didn't know where this one was. I was looking at it, because I didn't have dates.
Are you, are you pretty staunch on that, that's the site, or are you, are you willing to budge and look at other properties or what are your thoughts? I mean, is, for you to, to be looking at a party, you know, a new building, what, what is your vision?
More real stops. You know, as the city moves north, up highway twenty five to the intersection highway seven, maybe there is a better location north of town here. There's a lot of property available. I'm not saying either one of these lots are bad, you know, the one lot doesn't work according to the plan, the other one does. Um, that puts a lot of strain on that one street to get traffic in. Talked about the confusion to go down thirty to get to the wastewater plant. I see firefighters coming out of both Coldwater Crossing and Hidden Creek. And coming up the back road right here, they wouldn't even be out on twenty five. So that's gonna take some of the pressure off twenty five for the fire trucks coming out. No, I'm not locked on any site. When I looked at the study that was done in the bottom line, that was scary. I don't know how soon we're gonna look at a station.
I think Rod wants to address that.
Guy that came and did the study was brand new to this company.
Well, good thing we didn't pay for it though.
When he first came out with that, go back a little bit, or in two thousand and nine, we had a fire station run out in order to work on that lot. And, um, and I showed the guy, this is what we had done before, it was kind of what we like to see in the field. Or how many days, and who, and whatever. And okay, he looked at that, and he tried to, gave it to him, looked at that lot, our plan, well, he said, guy, true, he was in the back. How should I say, had a, he had this, uh, the main part of the forest going up towards Harvey's supply, that he built on their sheath. So that kind of, do that, it, it, it's right down there at that. So, I told him right away to begin with, this is not the type of structure we're necessarily looking for, we're not looking for. This was a structure that if you look at our, you know, it's a class, what do you wanna call it, a class eight, you know, with lock and brick and just, you know, swinging on a copper and, and it had bicycle doors on it, it was just all done just to give the price, so we just, you know, figured it out. And he didn't, he didn't understand that, I don't, I don't know why. So, when he sent it to him, I, I got a talk to this sales person that he actually dealt with in the first place, the vice president of the company. And he was out here and talked about it himself. And I think he's, I'm really upset, you know, I met him at the chief's conference, he's, I kinda related it, I believe, because I knew he was gonna have my life in the top case, the nation, not a real family, texting and everything else. And he was really, really super sorry about what happened, because it's not what he had in his business. So he is very, are he doing, you know, looking at the station and everything. But that's where that's at, because those numbers are, they're, they're, they're probably, you know, fifty to a hundred bucks. Where it's worth more than what, what it should have. And that's why the price is way up there. Part of that first slide, if you look at it, Billy Wood did on that, but they have to have a variance to put on that.
That's this one, right? The, the one that's currently purchased.
And because there's three foot setbacks on, on all that property, apparently. That's the way it is, it's not right, because the commercial property used to have a pile of money for spiritual. Not to be able to use more of that property if we did put it on that one. But it's too good, you know, now it all, three good ones over there. That's right. When he said it went different, that's where it came into that, but it's a lot.
So he's actually come back with a different, or a study of some sort?
Well, far and.
Materials used?
Right, right, yeah.
Okay.
And the type of structure. We're a precast building instead of a lock and brick building.
Okay.
Pre, precast panels? So would you consider a steel building like any other steel building in the community?
Okay, um, it picked up another thing from another company. And they give the different options of a, a building, you know, you can go to like a full, full type building and much structure. And one of the cons, you know, or pros is, you know, quick, easy directional and cheap, or inexpensive just in that cheap stuff. One of the big cons is, is not, uh, it's not very easy. And I think the same goes with a steel building, it's not very easy.
You kinda need that for a fire station, I mean, I.
Station, you wanna be able to keep here, and that's where it comes in here, how can't possible be your least best thing?
I, I mean, because you want, I mean, you want your fire station safe. Like when there was tornadoes, my mom actually threw us in the car and we went to the fire station, because my dad was a fireman. So, I mean, I spent a lot of time at the Chan Aston Fire Station during tornado warnings, just because my mom was scared to be home by herself.
So, I'm kinda wondering if we aren't ready for a fire station, why we're spending so much time talking about it and so little time talking about public works? That's just my first.
CIP, that was the main reason you were gonna do the study, was to be able to get an accurate, a more accurate number in the CIP.
Yep, I get it.
I think if that guy comes back with better, like, materials that would actually be more suitable for what we're looking, I mean, that's a good feasibility and then figuring out when and.
I just wanna get a general size down, so we know how big of a piece of land we're gonna need, so we can get moving on. Because we know, we're, we're gonna do all this work and then in however many years, when we decide we're ready, we're gonna redo it all again. And New Council's gonna have all new discussions on it and all new ideas and all new things. And we still don't have a public works building even talked about.
No, I agree.
So, that's just my observation here. Tonight?
Yes, I wanna see it.
We should dedicate just one meeting to this, because it's a big topic and.
Came up with real quick, but it says pictures of our current public works building and kind of the direction on why I think.
Look at you fancy with all your adapters.
Showing me up again.
So he, he does when he gets home, what can I do?
Yeah, I know, he's gonna cut me off real quick.
I'm gonna have a slider phone.
Trying to talk her into it.
I'm thinking about it.
Move over.
Then you don't know when she reads it.
Assimilate and like everybody off.
Let's just find me again, you know?
The diff I made.
Oh, here we go.
I'm not doing a good job of showing up, I'm just saying. She could have had it done by now. Notice how she's just sitting there letting you make a point.
I'm not even gonna go up there and try.
All right, Mayor's Public Works facility, that's how. All right, here's our current building. Hopefully you've all seen it, it's right outside.
You took the worst possible picture.
It was raining, it was raining.
Kids have not looked at that.
I didn't try. I didn't try. So the total building's two thousand two hundred and twenty square feet, that's a rough estimate, I, I guessed, I think we looked it up one time. I think it's just about thirty by sixty or thirty by seventy foot building.
Can we get this presentation, just so I have the numbers?
Sure.
Not right now, but.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Send it to me and I'll email it tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep. And then, well, I'll go on. Fifteen thousand of its cold storages is the, the far two doors and then the current door, or the door closest to you is six hundred and sixty square feet. And that's the heated storage portion of it. So, why is it a need? Because Kyle said so, I, that's the thing. Not because Kyle said so. There's a few, you know.
Works when you get one equipment, so you know to apply it.
Wise guy.
Safety, that's kind of my one point, one point I'm trying to make. No hot water, bathroom, little bit of an issue if I gotta go in order to find one. Sewer, there is no sewer. Eye wash station, we got a little bottle for an eye wash station, it could be a lot better. Lighting, pretty poor. Um, and then location, I'll jump right into question anyway. Adjacent to the old school house, park and community center. This I actually just thought of this weekend, I had to come in and work on a list station, I got called in. And I had to get the truck out and it was during when the craft show was going on.
Oh, no.
So it was a little tricky getting in and out and it was a little bit of hassle. So there's a lot of vehicle and foot traffic, I mean, I mean, that's not just, I mean, that's very weddings, that's very, I mean, anytime, there's a big event going on here. Foot traffic, parked right by it. There's a couple of issues, I'll show you a couple of pictures on what I mean by it and. Space, workspace, office space, office space not a real huge need, it'd be nice to sample one centralized location, because right now I kinda have everything. Got some in my building, got some at the water plant, got some here, it would be nice just to have one central location for me to work out of. Workspace, it's tough to maintain equipment, there's only the one little heated stall. You gotta pull equipment in and out, you can't wash it, you can't, it's just not practical. It's tough to do anything. Insufficient space for equipment, of course, and then there's no equipment, so equipment has to be stored outside. This is typically in the summer months when I'm using all the pieces of equipment usually, it's like I'm in and out with it, I don't wanna pack it all in and then have to unpack it all, it takes time. I like having it accessible right there when I need it, so, it's only an eight hour day and I'm only one guy, so I gotta make my time, use my time when I do it. Inadequate ventilation, I put this in here, when you're working on equipment or when you're grinding or when you're, you don't have a welder, it'd be nice to have a welder. Just proper ventilation in the building itself to get fresh air in there, I mean, safety concern. Garage doors, they're a little small. Eight foot bed on the truck or eight foot wide dump box on the truck and it's a ten foot door with, you know, mirrors that stick out about, you know, ten inches on each side, so I got about two inches on each side of the mirrors. Building's getting older, it's had a couple roof leaks, I patched. Ceiling's a little moldy in a few spots, garage doors are pretty beat up from when I started, before I started, not after. And then the bottom one, that's kind of my key point, public works can't grow and it can't take on more responsibility to take care of the city. Public works, that's its main drive, that's what all public works, departments in cities, they have them to take care of the city. Uh, we contract a lot of stuff out, but it's gonna come to a point where it's not gonna be practical to contract stuff out anymore. You gotta, gotta be able to take care of yourself and there's just a, being able to do it yourself, I like throwing snowplow out there. The landlord's gonna throw a snowplow out there, but it's like, be on your own, people come and do your own snowplow and do it how you want it, as fast as you want it. And it's just, it's, it would be nice. Some pictures. Here's the building again in the corner. This is the heated portion of the building itself. So, I got it a lot more organized than what it was when I started, that's all I'll say. And built a new workbench and all that other stuff, moved some cabinets around, utilized pretty much every single space of my wall space. It'd be nice to have more wall space. You can see my little sewer system I got going here. My little wastewater bucket for washing my hands, I got cold water, don't have hot water. If I get greasy hands, I usually go to the city hall or I go to the water plant where I have some prettier soap and stuff I can use. So it's a little bit of a headache every now and then. Yeah, it's just, it's a little small. Looks good sized, but, here's my eye wash station. Should look something more like this, this is what's in the water plant. A full eye wash station with a shower and everything, so if you do get any, you know, chemical or anything on you, get it out efficiently.
The eye washer isn't fired, is it?
It is not, no, I checked it, yep. But, yeah. My floor drain, it, everything's tapered to the metal, so usually when I park the truck in there, everything melts off and goes to the metal and I can usually sweep it out. Then when it gets to the, I pump it out, because there's, it's everything, the building is actually plumbed and rigged for sewer, but there's sewer, it never ran to it. So I don't know where the stubs are or anything like that, assuming if we have plans somewhere for it, I don't know. Here's the truck. Got a foot on each side, if I suck in, I can make it through. That's just with the, in the doorway and then with the mirrors, of course, I got about an inch on each side, that's why I got the power pole mirrors, make it a little easier getting in and out. With the plow on it, the plow is, I got a nine foot six plow, so it's a little tighter yet to the plow on it. And the sander, with the sander and the plow on it, I actually gotta move the front cabinet so I can actually put the plow and the truck in and be able to walk around the backside of the plow. Or the backside of the truck and get around it. Here it is, you know, fully pulled in, nice, it's not too bad, I can work around it, everything, you know, I can work on it. Can't lift the dump box up to work under it, unless I have it parked in there a certain way and I don't break any light bulbs and everything, then I can get it up to a certain point. Here it is in the winter, this is kinda how I do the operation, I gotta, I wanna keep the skid loader and the truck inside, warmed up, ready to go, not that I have to come in and do a mowing and plow and I can't get the plow yet or the truck started because it's in the cold storage. So I keep it both on the, on the warm side. Can't work on one without pulling the other one out, can't wash one, inside, it's a little tight anyway, so I usually wash it outside and if it's a little, it gets a little chilly when it's dirty below, so. And usually, I usually wash it, I try to wash it at least once a week. If I'm salt, using it to salt and everything, I just wanna get that salt and everything out there as soon as possible. If I'm salt, using it to salt and everything, I just wanna get that salt and everything off there, it seems possible, just to protect the... Not to have that salt corroding either way of anything, after both of them out hit and the truck is gone. And if I do use a piece of equipment, I'm gonna use it out of the snow bucket in here, or I'll have the broom in here, or the blower in here, 'cause I like to have it melt off before I put it back to the cold storage, so it's ready for next time. So, yeah, here's a couple more pictures of it in there. It's pretty tight. Here's the cold storage, it is a little messy in between seasons right now, so you gotta cut me a little slack. This is it from the side door. It's full, just to say the least. Usually, in the winter, it is a little bit more organized, 'cause I kinda have everything crammed at the one side, but then I, for my skid loader, for the blade and all the skid loader attachments, I bring them in and out, and I usually have the plow on the one side. Little bit more shelving and stuff would make it a lot nicer, but it's kinda what I'm dealing with at the moment. Outside storage, the fence has been awesome, I absolutely love it. Be able to park something outside, not to worry about it for a little while, that's kinda nice. But I do like having the pieces of equipment inside, even though, I mean, it's skid loader attachments and everything else, if you have them inside, it's just gonna last that much longer. Yeah, as soon as I, as soon as I get rid of the other mower, and there's another little mower in there, as soon as I get rid of that too, then I'll, I can put the watering trailer back in there, and then I also got the broom sitting outside, which I like to have in. And the outside storage, I like to have more for, you know, for my rock piles, the sand piles, and my kind of things, for when I need it. Took a little picture of the one truck, if Public Works does grow, and if we do hire one more guy someday, having another vehicle would be pretty nice. So, doesn't have to be a big one-ton truck like we have right now, but a little, little half-ton would be perfect, and we're gonna need a place to store it. Here's kinda my one concern that I still kinda have, I don't know if you remember, when we actually approved the fence, we actually approved to get blinders on the fence, but I actually decided not to get them, just because, here's the head of the trail coming in and out, got the little free library right there. And I like being able to see the kids, where they usually like watching me, so if I'm doing something in a piece of equipment, or running the truck, or going with the bobcat, they like to be glued against the fence, watching. So, if I had blinders on there, they'd wanna come around and run, you know, look right there, and if I was coming out of the gate, and I wouldn't be able to see anybody coming in front of me, so I didn't leave the blinders out. But it's still a little bit of a headache, I mean, they still like, I mean, parents have to come, park right next to it, and watch their kids from the car, playing on the playground, and that kind of thing, so... A little bit of a headache, just location-wise. Yeah, that's just kinda my little spiel on why I think we need a new one, I hope you guys kinda see it too. It's an older building, it's made, it's done its job, but I think we do need to think of something a little bit bigger, or to modify this one a little way, or something would be nice. So, yeah, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
I'd be cordial if you were something, we sell a fair amount of my shirt.
The whole first part of your presentation and the issues that you, the things that are missing in your building that... I, I think you need to come look at the meat market. You can put big doors in there, there's offices in there, there's a bathroom in there, there's hot water in there, there's everything already in there that you're talking about. It just needs the overhead doors. I think the ceiling is high enough, I don't know, I want you just to come look at it. And that would solve almost all your problems right there off the bat. Plenty of room to expand up there. That's just my initial thought. I'm only saying that 'cause that's what I know, I know what that building looks like, and... It has everything that you require, or that you're missing in this one. Plus, you have the other one then too, the empty pole shit to put cold storage stuff in, but...
Okay, yeah, obviously, we need a public works building, that's evident. So, what kind of discussion do you want to have? And we've, we've talked, like Ty said before, you've talked to us a couple of times, and we haven't made a whole lot of progress on it. And maybe this has clarified a few things for us, and I could see us needing this before we pursue the fire station, have, have no of it. I would, I would see the problems, I, from an OSHA standpoint, I think OSHA would not be too happy if they come in and...
You've been there before.
Yeah, they've, you get the right person, there you may have a problem.
I thought the eye wash problem expired.
What's that?
I thought the eye wash solution's not expired, we're good.
Okay. But, but there's, there's some good points, I mean... We've had a lot of public works stuff going on this year, and we've had a lot of discussions on the, the things, so we need to, we need to address that part of it. So, where do you all go?
Where to start?
Where to start?
Where are we gonna get the money? I mean, now we're potentially looking at, what, doubling water bills?
Well, first of all, we, you have a million-two in your, or a million in, that's been set aside, that will affect your future bond rates. But what I went ahead and did, and was in your packet, is I had Conhanagin do four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for you, and the debt service was forty-two thousand a year, on four hundred and fifty thousand. And you can, without doing a, usually cities have to do a, put it on the ballot when you issue debt like this, when it's not for a 429, but, like I said... It's street projects, 'cause we assess them. So, it's under chapter 429 of the state statute, that's why they call it 429. No, no, so as long as the item has been part of a capital improvement plan, and there's a public hearing process, it's a more process that we'd have to do. We have the authority to issue bonds, but it's limited to point one-six percent of the estimated market value of the city for the debt payment. So, with that said, the debt payment couldn't be more than two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So, we can do this without doing it on a referendum, if we wanna do it under this other state statute that he is citing on here that we can do. So, we can issue the debt with the forty-five thousand, we could put it into our, our calculator to see what it does to your property taxes if you want, and see what happens there too, but we can borrow the money, so...
Do you borrow it as a bond?
Bond, bonding is borrowing, is a mortgage to a city. And we're, we're authorized under certain state statutes on how we can issue debt, or borrow money.
And then where does that forty-two thousand come?
That's what you levy? Then we levy it back off the property tax, state board.
Okay, I guess, I would like to, I mean, one option, like Ty said, I, I would have preferred Ty's presentation compromise as a citizen to the council, rather than council to council, but that's, wait, there's no. I would like to see what's there. I'd like to have Kyle look at it too, have you given any thought to it or not?
I, I, I really didn't give it any thought.
I mean, there may be, may be an answer to a problem, may not, I'm not sure. I think we need, need to go forward on Public Works building, and we need to go forward in finding a site for it, if, so where do you wish to go? It's quarters to nine, I've dropped my part, the other part, and we're gonna pull that for next work session, I think, because it's getting late.
You know, I've looked at all, all of these sites. I've put some pros and cons together on most of them. I still look at the far-right column, the price of the property, what it's gonna cost to, to build a Public Works facility out of, whether it's Ty's site or any of these other sites. And I keep going back to the Compo site. The one question I do have is how the Compo site was filled in. If we can put a building on that site, just knowing that it was a pond that was filled in.
Yeah, that's your problem.
It may, there may be some issues there with soil.
You know, so the soil corrections could be a problem. But owning that site kinda gives us a step forward. Some of the pros, it's out of town, it's not in the middle of town where it gets messy and it needs to be cleaned up. You're out of the way of kids, safety. As far as fire station, I've kinda separated the two. And I don't know, as we're ready for the fire station, the conversation we had with the clone station, or the Carver station, I can kinda see that. You know, the two of them don't work real well together. I don't know if there's enough separation out there at that site. And we'd have to look at that some more, maybe there is.
No separation at the, or achievement class?
The Compo site.
Compo site.
You know, I don't know if we can get enough separation from Public Works and Fire to make it work for them.
At that site?
At that site.
See, 'cause I, if we separate those projects, the fire station's not gonna get built to, to win. I mean, it's just we're increasing the cost of the fire station by how much, by not consolidating those? You know, are we, are we ready, and is that the right answer, to put the fire station out? How much, I don't know, I can't attach a number to how much longer, but are we, is that okay? Does that make sense?
If we do the Public Works, we're putting the fire station out at least ten years, I'm sure. That's just a guess.
I'm, I would agree with that, I was thinking maybe not that long, but I know separating them is gonna do that. But at the same time, with taxes and utility bills going out, can we afford to put them together? Even though you can expand onto it, maybe we leave room, that we can expand onto it.
It's like a possibility, not necessarily like a final thing, but like, make sure when you do the site, that you would have room if you were to do the fire station there. Not saying it's gonna go there, because you need pros and cons of every location, just, and actually thinking about it, but don't set yourself up for failure to begin with, if you decide, you can leave it open, or you don't have to have it there, at least you have the space.
You know, unlike you, I think it'll be attached to fire station to, to the Public Works project somehow, and it's attached to Ruptops too, I agree.
Well, I don't think we could afford to do both, even if, and, but the thing is, is that we need a Public Works way sooner, like, within the next year or two. I mean, that's how quick that...
Well, and I have visited his site, there are a number of safety issues that catch my eye, you know? Trying to wash his vehicle in there next to all those steel cabinets, you're just rotting them to the ground, sooner, sooner than later. And if we go to expand with another employee, you need another vehicle in there, which ain't gonna fit. Next year, we're putting another parked vehicle in there that's gonna make it just that much tighter, so...
Yeah, we're stuck in that spot of being too small to be big, but too big to be small, I mean, where we're at.
Okay, so what, what's, what do you want, what are you doing next, so we come to some sort of a agreement, or some idea someplace in the next two, not too distant future here? Stick on, work on Public Works, work on something that is expandable possibly?
I think, I think Public Works, but you can't leave the fire station out of the equation if we do out at the Compo site. But you, I, but it's not like you have to say that's where it's gonna be, I think you just make sure that you account that there's enough room, that you could have two things out there. And if we find you can't put two things, then we know that the fire station won't go there, and that's where Public Works goes. So, maybe you try to do something like that, like, could you fit both buildings there? If you could, then you make sure you put the Public Works in the right spot, and the fire station probably doesn't have to be in the right of way, you know, and the Public Works is more offset, you know, just for the amount of...
Well, we have three, three and a half acres here, I think, that's more than sufficient.
You have a lot of room, but I, you know, make sure you are strategic in your planning, like, there's an imaginary fire station could be there. So, you don't leave that site out, you don't put it in the middle and be like, well, we have to move Public Works here now to get the fire station here.
Now, we don't need to, we got six acres to work with.
But I think not buying property, I mean, I, why... Why spend money when you don't need to, when we already have the land?
How much is, we still have to level that land, right? And how, what kind of a cost did you have the land to have someone come out and level that land?
It was three grand, and the county's gonna pay it. They'll get it back to Graydon, they'll reseed it for us too, he's meeting, a meeting with Mark, it's a week from Wednesday about moving the roads.
Maybe it wouldn't hurt to do soil borings, to make sure that, it actually could be built on?
I think, well, you might have to do a building pass, that might be another option, but I think that we had the whole plan from when the ponds were put in, and they were the, the banks that were, were pushed in, and they were all claimed, they were all claimed.
That was Arnold Gregg, when they decommissioned the ponds, they pushed, leveled it all, and Gregg does have the building plans and everything.
There's plans and what the soils were, I think soil borings were done, I think, I didn't wanna say that now until I checked, but I, I think there were some soil borings that were done at that time too, I think.
Or do we need, like Lo said, I was actually thinking the same thing, do we need to get, get some soil borings to see if that's, if that's even feasible to build up there?
Right, I mean, we might already have them.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, you might already have them as part of that decommissioning plan.
Okay, so why don't you look once if we have them, and if not, if we don't, let's get, price for next meeting, what soil borers are costing, we can make a decision on whether to go ahead with that, and determine what is possible. Is that okay with the council?
Now, with the fire, with the fire station, knowing your needs and the potential of ten-plus years, if it doesn't go out to that site, do you have any thoughts about that? Does that change your opinion of where it's at, or is that still just a bad spot? So, are you, you still be under, or your opinion would be, it's, it would be better to build a separate fire station, as opposed to attach the Public Works? Even knowing it's ten?
I would be, really gonna have so much more money than if we do it. I do know I got Carver, and they have their struggles.
They're gonna be, they're talking about separating, actually.
Oh, really?
Well, I mean, me, I mean, you really don't have to do the buildings together either, but, you know, but just...
What are the struggles?
Just leave it as another option, like, it might not work, you know, if we're gonna grow this way, it might be like, this isn't even a feasible thing, but let's not set ourselves up for failure.
It's a mess behind there, you know?
Another, that's a positive, it's another benefit that if people could always put their comp works, like, the wells or the wastewater plants are actually, been in there a long time, and it's gonna be only a matter of time before we have to, if we can run water out there, it's easy enough to, to run potable water, a water plant, hopefully, a water plant as well, which Greg actually did as well, as a part of it.
Okay. Well, let's see if you find that information, and if there aren't, if there's no credible information, then check with, what's cost the soil borers would be, so you get done before process ends.
You mean a variance? We'd have to do the, you'd have to push the public hearing process, and the planning commission would have to...
I would say, I would say a problem is with, regarding a variance, I mean...
How much of a variance are you?
If we go with... I mean, if we go with two separate buildings, so again, we already owned that land, so now we're just looking at the cost of a building, so, you know, it's not like we are looking to build, that, that would be a much better site as far as being on Highway twenty-five, is what I'm just saying. So, so we do have that, and we own it, so... So, so we do have that, and we own it, so. Yeah, the variance, I wouldn't see a problem with the variance, I can't imagine.
That would be for the fire station only.
Yeah, fire station only, yeah.
I think it's still an option, is a spot for a fire station, but I think we have to kind of...
I mean, if we don't attach a fire station to a public works facility, can we come up with a different public works facility? That's not gonna be, I don't wanna say grandiose, but, you know, so expensive. I mean, are we still gonna look at the precast walls and everything?
For public works.
Wasn't there a quote of one?
I don't know, I think there we could look at the steel structure.
I mean, is that a steel structure?
That's what, we looked at that already. Well, and we looked at, that's what we looked at, was clearly buildings, and Leicester Building came in.
You know, maybe we can keep the project cost down a little bit, if you're not gonna attach a fire station to it.
Well, didn't you have a cost for the building?
This is just a guesstimate, he said two hundred and twenty-five thousand plus the heating and plumbing and HVAC and electrical, would be about another two hundred and twenty-five, just to use as a budget number, that's how I came, we came up with four hundred and fifty thousand, and then that was, based on St. Bonnie's building size.
St. Bonnie, they put up a brick building, and it was about four hundred and fifty thousand, so that's like, well,
How many years ago?
How many years ago, I don't know, it seems pretty recent.
Okay, well, let's see what we find out there, and go from there, hopefully get something figured out here. Uh, the other thing here, let's put that on next work session then. Yeah, do that.
Can you, can you email that as well, just in case I lose mine, and I can just?
Yeah, put it, put it, email it, go to the next one, yeah.
So, the picture that's on the calendar was on this year, the new one now?
Of the, of the truck?
Last year, yeah. It was on the fire case nineteen, one of the years.
Exactly this year, it's not next year, no, it is the new calendar, but it's, I'm already, this is not the new one, I'm already keeping it in mind.
Yeah, you don't want, you don't want a pitch fire in there, no. It's gonna be burning all winter, yes. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? All okay to say aye? Thank you.
Not really though, if you start talking about that building and stuff.
What, I'm mad about heat, I totally give the thought of speed, I just think it'd be a great, for that, it's just, it's just like,
You're, and you're right, you're right, I agree.
They come in and they're wanting, you know, like, why not, we're such a small community.
And I'm a little upset with you.